Ladies, have a wonderful Mother's Day. Ate well, had a good time. Right this time, Madam Perk, would you call the room?
Good afternoon. Roll call for this work session. Councilmember Ralph. Councilmember Gunn. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Gillyard. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember McLean. Councilmember Baker. Also present is Mayor Edwards, the city manager, Odi Donald. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much.
Our first item on the agenda is a presentation to council on mobile integrated health from Grady Health Systems EMS Fire Department.
Come on up, Grady, be glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, our city officials that are here, and community members. Thank you for having us today. I'm Dr. Steve Moyer, I'm with Grady Health System with Grady EMS. Also got with me some of my colleagues, Dr. Yancy, who serves as our medical director, and Dr. Kumar as well, serves as one of our associate medical directors, is also kind of focused on the area of South Fulton, and Dr. Sherrie Mayberry, which will be making a presentation on mobile integrated health program. And as we have been down in this area now for about nine months now, I wanted to give you a couple of data points, but before I did that, I wanted to let you know that we are proud to be your EMS system and to have Grady and the South Fulton community and to be your partner in your EMS coverage. So it's been a rather busy time in this part of the county, since January of this year through April 31. I wanted to give you a little snapshot of some stats. So from an EMS standpoint, from an emergency, what we call a priority one, call volume and response time, we've run some 3,645 calls in the city of South Fulton, and that's equates to roughly about 900 calls per month that are of the emergent priority nature. And we're doing that with an average of about a 12, right at a 12-minute consistently response time. Now, our goal for all of our areas is a nine-minute priority one or emergency response time. So obviously, we've still got a few minutes to shave off of that so that we can achieve for you and for us and for our patients a nine-minute response time. And two of the ways that we are doing that, one, is we are working on some enhancements to dispatch. We're working on a CAD to CAD, so it'll be greater transparency between the fire department, and we're enjoying our relationship with Chief Butler and working with him, and prior to that, Chief Few, obviously, before he retired. So with our CAD to CAD enhancements, it'll be greater transparency to the fire department, be easy to see our ambulances and where they're posted at, the calls that they're running on, make that a little bit easier. And then we're also going to be doing a little bit more of an enhancement with doing our own dispatch of our ambulances, which I think will give us greater, you know, a greater posting ability of our trucks, giving the right number of trucks to the right places. I think that, along with the mobile integrated health program that I believe Dr. Mayberry and Dr. Yancy are going to share, will also help us to shave down from that 12-minute mark down to the nine-minute mark that we desire to be and that we told the region through council that we would work to meet. Also, before I bring up Dr. Mayberry, just like to mention that as part of Grady EMS, we do operate what we call a mobile stroke ambulance that's currently operated in the city of Atlanta. It's the only one in the state of Georgia. It's one of five or six in the country right now. That mobile stroke unit comes with a nurse, a paramedic, an EMT, and a CT tech. That ambulance stroke unit has a CAT scanner onboard of that truck, and hopefully in the next, oh, we took, hopefully in the next 30 or 45 days, we hope to have that logistics worked out to be able to deploy that unit as well into the South Fulton community as well. So we're working on some last-minute protocols and logistics of that. So it's worked out very well in the city force and for those patients where time is of the essence for strokes, and potentially if they've got a clot and getting TPN on board, that certainly is a huge help. So look for that to be coming up as well. And with that, one of the enhancements we want to get outward to the community is our mobile integrated health program. I want to turn over to Dr. Sherrie Mayberry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what I'm here today to talk about is the mobile integrated health program. So that is one of Grady's innovative programs to expand traditional EMS services. So with mobile integrated health, what we do is we respond to the non-emergent calls. So when an individual calls 911 and it's for not a heart attack, not a stroke, not anything that's a true emergency, then my team is dispatched to go to that patient's home and assess the situation. So my team's comprised of a nurse practitioner and an advanced ENT. So what that offers them, the ability to do is to diagnose right there on scene, to prescribe medications, and then we also do that extra step as far as care coordination. So when we do our social assessment, if we identify that there's some additional determinants of health that are influencing the pattern of accessing healthcare for that individual, then we'll connect them to the appropriate community resources. If we identify that they don't have a primary care doctor, then we'll help to assist them getting established with a primary care doctor, and then help to ensure that they have transportation to those appointments. So the purpose of our mobile integrated health program is to kind of divert those non-emergent calls to a more effective resource to be able to manage those conditions, so that way we can leave more of our ALS and BLS ambulances in service, so that way if a true emergency arises, we have the personnel and the resources to be able to address those emergencies. In addition to responding on the 911 side, we also like to collaborate with the communities that we are partnering with. So that means that if somebody from fire or somebody from law enforcement identifies that they have an individual that they've been having to go on calls that's for non-emergent complaints, or something they identify they need more of to help them access healthcare in a better way, there's a referral system in place where they can refer those patients to us, and then we can go to the home, do the assessment, and then connect that individual with the appropriate community resources. So we're really hoping to help connect your community members to the most appropriate way to access healthcare, so that way we can make sure that we're improving their quality of life and improving their overall health. All right, and then I'll, Dr. Yancy, to give a little bit more information.
Thank you, Sherrie, appreciate it.
Yes, our mobile integrated healthcare system is quite innovative, and we're aiming to achieve efficiencies in terms of, for the patient, avoiding an expensive ambulance ride, an expensive emergency department visit. In terms of benefits to the system, just like Dr. Mayberry alluded to, what we're trying to do is keep our 911 ambulances for those critical patients and critical calls where time is of the essence. And that's why Dr. Steve Moyer's gave you the statistics he did about the response times that we're steadily bringing down and steadily working on. So that is the gist of the motivation for our mobile integrated healthcare team and how it integrates with EMS. And if we get to the house of someone who has an earache, or toothache, or sore throat, or skin rash, or joint aches, and we find that because of their condition, they just can't cut it at home, then we're connected in with the 911 EMS system and the ambulances, and we can get them to the right place at the right time there. We are working with the New Camp Creek Parkway, Grady Clinic, and the East Point Clinic, so that we don't have to bring everybody into the emergency department even when they can't be treated at home. So what we're talking about is a whole array of services within the Grady Health System, and the basis of it in the community is, of course, the EMS system and service. Thank you, appreciate it.
Dr. Yancy, good seeing you.
Yes, good seeing you.
We have a few questions, like, how would help you all with your response time if you were building a facility in South Fulton?
I think...
That would help your response time a little bit, Dr. Yancy.
Yeah, yes, all right. Well, now, we do have one in the South Fulton zone, but of course, the state has a...
South Fulton, yeah.
I understand. I see where you're going. Thank you.
Thank you for your statistics. Is there any way we can get some type of handout, or a summary, a synopsis, PowerPoint, a something that can highlight the numbers that you gave us, because I would love to share this information with my community. They always ask, ooh, I always get questions about the emergency provider and response times and how many calls you respond to. Also, we get sometimes inquiries about, do you all get hiccups with the 911 operator knowing whether or not where you're going? Because I'm hearing a lot of, you know, I get a lot of inquiries about that. Another question I do have, so is there any way you all can get us some tangibles?
Yes, it'd probably be best for me to provide that Chief Butler and you can forward it on to you, would that be okay? Or I can supply directly to your city clerk?
That's fine, I want to be... Is this you?
Yes.
Okay, can you make sure we get this information, because I would love to provide to the residents how many calls they respond to, and how many they haven't had responded to since they've been onboard with South Fulton, and the response time, and the statistics that he gave earlier. The other question I have is, what type of technology upgrades are you all looking to eventually implement? For example, is there any way that if someone calls 911 and you all have been dispatched, someone can go to like an iPhone app and see where you all are in process as far as where you all are as far as responding to the calls?
Not the general public, but that's part of our CAD to CAD upgrade, that the fire department will be able to see, you know, where our units are currently at, how many units are in service, where they're at, how many are on calls, how many are available, how many are out in hospital.
Okay, so it's possible that the fire truck may respond quicker than you all?
Yes.
Okay.
Some instances.
And so if they do, then they can look, they can go to this app and determine where you are in the process of their call?
Yes, with that upgrade.
Okay, so do you know when that's going to be implemented?
Well, it's right now sitting between engineers and IT, so they're making it talk. So right now, when you call 911, it's going to the county's 911 center, and so we're making their CAD system, their computer system, talk to ours at Grady. And so the engineers right now, they've got it up and running, and they're just cleaning up whatever engineering or technology glitches they have to work, so the two systems are working and talking to each other and sharing the appropriate information. I would guess 45 days, 30, 45 days, when they complete all of those engineering tests. And so sometime, you know, hopefully before too foreign this summer. Then what we're looking at is when the call comes into 911, just like it is in the city of Atlanta, it's what we call a one-button transfer. So when the operator on the 911 side hears that there is a medical-related emergency, they'll push a button. Our dispatch center will come up online in conjunction with them, make sure there's a good connection there of line, and then we take over at that point. We provide emergency medical dispatch, pre-arrival instructions. Our ambulances are dispatched immediately based on triage, or if it's one of those really low-level calls that we were referring to, that's where MIH may be dispatched, so it may be a nurse practitioner, EMT, and one of the SUVs, Chevy Tahoe-type vehicles that would be responding to that call.
Okay, my last question is, is there any way that you all can, do you have any type of technology where if you go to a website or online and you place a zip code into the system, it can tell you, it basically gives us the statistics that you gave us at the beginning of your presentation?
No, no.
Okay. Do you look, do you think you want to have anything like that?
I think the state is moving to that, because we have to provide, well, really, it's almost instantaneous within the state database that we have to submit all of our run reports to, and so I believe that the state is looking at having that, almost that exact, that's what I'm understanding, almost that exact thing. It wouldn't surprise me if we don't see that before the end of this calendar year, if not very soon thereafter, I would imagine.
Thank you.
Okay, well, councilwoman, councilwoman, you allow me, the security officer, he actually has to respect that. So I'm happy to screen her.
Okay, thank you. I just have one question. So what happens when you get on site with someone who's having an emergency and they don't have insurance?
Doesn't matter to us.
Okay. I just wanted to know whether or not it was some alternative event, and you tried to get service for them anyway, or hook them up with?
You're talking about emergency service or non-emergency?
Emergency service.
Emergency service. Well, again, that does not, you know, matter to us, doesn't matter to Grady. Again, we'll transport that, we'll treat that patient appropriately, based on Dr. Yancy's protocols, and we are an extension of him as our medical director, and we'll, you know, obviously initiate immediate, you know, emergency care, advanced life support for that patient, and then we'll transport them to their destination of choice. Again, irrespective of the insurance or the ability to pay any of those, that's not something that we get involved with while we're on scene, or if they're not able to make those decisions, we will transport them to the most appropriate facility based on their medical condition. So if it's a trauma or stroke patient, we'll get them to the appropriate center that can take care of that illness. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman, give us a few others.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm sorry I was a little tardy. So my first question is, there have been some concerns about your organization hiring AMR, and AMR ambulatory services used to provide services for the city of South Fulton, and of course, you know, a lot of the residents were not happy with them. So do you have any plans on hiring AMR services?
Hiring former AMR employees or hiring AMR services?
Hiring them to provide any services we could need?
No, we don't have any intentions of subcontracting out any of our services for theater, we don't.
Okay. And also, too, medical, the need for enhanced medical services is really important to the city of South Fulton. Do you have any insights or any data that shows that, you know, the expansion is needed and where it's needed in the city of South Fulton? And are you able to provide that?
No.
So, so really, we were just taking the community as a whole, and so with the referral process, what we can do is, once we identify that there's a particular need that your community has, then we'll make sure that we have additional resources in place to help mitigate those needs. But as far as, you know, what we do for every community is we provide a blanket of services, and then again, tailored to the specific needs of the community.
So when you decided that we needed these particular services, you kind of did a study and things of that nature, do you have that data as well?
Well, so there's no data in particular, but we just know that the majority of the calls that we get out of our experience and looking at our call volume, a lot of it is low-level, alpha, non-emergent calls, so we realize that we need to put something in place to handle those non-emergent calls and those individuals who call 911 frequently for primary care needs, to try to help them, you know, get a primary care doctor, so that way they can utilize the healthcare system in a way that's more beneficial for them.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
I think what I'm trying to figure out is, with your data, do you see that there's increasing calls in certain areas of South Fulton and things of that nature? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Do you have that insight, that data?
I mean, I've got the data, the report that we will provide, I've got the data for all of the South Fulton area, all of the cities within South Fulton, the call volume. If that's what you're asking, I can get it wrote down by call time as well.
Okay, I, or the manager, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I actually have...
Get the background.
Oh, sorry. I think I have a question that follows that. I know that Grady is kind of doing an assessment on y'all's service delivery model outside of this particular project as well, and I know that many of our councilmembers have interest in hospitals or, you know, additional urgent care centers and where to put them and how to advocate for those. Would you guys be able to be a partner to the city in helping us evaluate, you know, that type of investment, whether it be from the city or for us advocating to the state when we start looking at hospital licenses and other activities? Is that something you guys could be helpful with?
Certainly, I mean, we can, I can certainly get you connected up with the appropriate executives at the hospital that us more in there will house every day than ours is, particularly in EMS. But we'd be glad to be a part of that and help connect those resources.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate it. And that's why I mentioned that on one level, there's the Grady Hospital. On another level, there are the outpatient clinics that we interface with in EMS, so that every patient doesn't need to be pushed into a crowded emergency department. Sometimes their needs can be taken care of right there in the home with the mobile integrated healthcare program that we've been talking about. Sometimes they do need transport, but to the next level of care in one of the Grady outpatient clinics. And the Camp Creek Grady outpatient clinic opened up in January, so we don't have any statistics on that yet from them. And then, of course, there's the East Point Clinic also. And then, for the strokes, the heart attacks, the trauma, Grady Hospital is the closest appropriate destination. So we'd be more than anxious to...
Grady is the closest appropriate destination for the city of South Fulton?
For trauma patients, for stroke patients. And cardiac is a little different, and there are sources closer to the community down here for cardiac patients. But certainly, for the highest level of stroke care and the highest level of trauma care are downtown at Grady.
All right, thank you, Dr. Yancy, I appreciate it. And Madam Perk, we're looking at the presentation. Thank you also.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Is council discussion on Aritropolis Transit Feasibility Study from Aritropolis Atlanta CID?
It's going to be down backseat, ma'am, for this, this one. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kirsten Moth, I'm the program director for the Aritropolis Atlanta Community Improvement Districts. I appreciate the time this evening to present our recently completed transit feasibility study. We wanted to go through a little bit of the process that we conducted over the course of the study, but really want to focus on the recommendations and what our next steps are. Great. So, as I mentioned, my name is Kirsten Moth, and the Aritropolis Atlanta Community Improvement District conducted this study with the assistance of VHB Nelson Nygaard and Nickelworth Consulting. We began this process in 2018 and finished the documentation earlier this year, and as I mentioned, I'm going to provide a brief overview of the process, but really focus in on those recommendations and the next steps. So we started off the study with a visioning breakfast. We kicked it off, bringing stakeholders together, elected officials, and we also invited John Lasarda, who's known as kind of the father of the Aritropolis idea. He's a professor at University of North Carolina, so he came and kind of presented about Aritropolis and general. We did one-on-one and group interviews with key stakeholders. We had over 40 stakeholders, which is why we had to do a lot of small groups, but we also tried to focus in on key focus areas so that we would have a more conducive conversation. And we included all of our regional partners, which all of those are on the red side of your slides. And it wouldn't be a plan without all of the data and analysis and mapping and GIS and Excel spreadsheets. And so we've got a plethora of data sources, looking at both the existing transit needs and what we project as future transit needs for this area based on development and implementation. We also really wanted to focus on technology. We're pretty familiar with traditional technologies, heavy rail, light rail, streetcar, local bus service, but what are some emerging technologies that might be applicable in these areas? And we actually had a chance to travel over to London and Amsterdam to experience some of those technologies and see how we can bring those here. And we, towards the end of the study, conducted an innovation summit, so we actually wanted technology and providers and vendors to come and demonstrate their technologies. And so we had a number of vendors come, all the way from scooters to over-the-roadway, you know, suspended systems, come and present their product. And finally, based on all of this information, we formulated our recommendations, which as I mentioned, is what we want to focus on here tonight. So what are the needs that we really identified? Well, I think it's very obvious that it's South Metro, the Aritropolis, South Fulton is a 24-hour district, it has 24-hour jobs, and transit does not operate 24 hours a day. MARTA operates typically about 12, in their service about 12:30 a.m., does not crack up until 5:30 a.m. So especially at the airport, we have a lot of employees, and then we also have a lot of industries that require three shifts every day. I think we are also all familiar with the lack of supporting infrastructure for existing transit, bus shelters, sidewalks, signage, all of those things that we can do to improve the existing services out there today. And the last one that I want to hit on is that we do not have a central location where all of these modes of travel can come together, and so we saw a need for a union station-type intermodal facility. I won't say it's going to be as big as that, but we've got a lot of modes of travel. In fact, we have every mode of travel in the Aritropolis, and how do we bring all those together and provide that connectivity to residents, employees, and visitors? So opportunities for innovation, I talked about technology, yes, some of that includes self-driving autonomous type of technology, but we also looked at other technologies. So we see a trend moving towards battery electric power, and so we explored some of those technologies and some of those vehicles. And we also see a trend towards on-demand services, app-based services, live, super-type services. So can we transfer that kind of type of technology to transit services, making it more on-demand and door-to-door? And so here are kind of the overall recommendations for the study. I won't hit on all of them, but there are a couple of key things that I want to mention, especially for the city of South Fulton. So one of the things that we discovered is that we have a number of express buses passing right by this area and going to downtown. Is there an opportunity to bring express buses to this area, and where do those go? So that was one of the key things that we looked at. And then, once they're here, how do we create a system that provides a theater network into the regional network? How do we get people to live and want to live in South Fulton, but need to work downtown, get from their home to downtown? We know that the MARTA rail station is there, there may be some local bus, but there may not, and so we really wanted to focus more on the microscale of how do we get people from their front doors to the system where then they have full access to transit? So a couple of things for the city of South Fulton is the Camp Creek connector. We show it a green line going out to the west along the creek with an arrow going beyond kind of our study boundary. So the blue oval is really where we focus our efforts, but we saw that an arterial bus system or some sort of technology along Camp Creek from the airport area all the way out into South Fulton is necessary for providing more frequent connectivity along Camp Creek. The other one that we really want to focus on for the city of South Fulton is the South Fulton Parkway, BRT, possibly upgraded to, BRT being bus rapid transit, possibly upgraded to light rail. This is something that came out of the Fulton County Transit Plan, is something that we see as being important for all the cities of South Fulton, including the city of South Fulton, and it's something that we want to pursue moving forward. We also looked at a number of recommendations in Clayton County, and that was the other key part of this study, is we have Clayton County who's been doing their planning, Fulton County who's been doing their planning, how do we bridge that and make sure that the South Metro area is connected to each other, not just each of those connected to the bigger system, but thinking about that horizontal east-west connectivity? So, next steps, we are working very closely with MARTA, as well as the Atlanta Transit Link Authority. The ATL, Atlanta Transit Link Authority, they will be doing a call for projects, for transit projects all over the region beginning in June. And so we plan to work with them to try to get these projects into that regional plan and be prioritized as a part of the regional plan. So we're coordinating very closely and our ears to the ground on that call for projects. We'll be coordinating with Fulton County, as well as all the cities, especially since there's a current comprehensive transportation plan that's ongoing, so we want to make sure that that's coordinated effort as well. And so, in order to make our projects eligible for federal funding, we need the plans to be adopted by the locals, and so we are asking that each of the cities consider adopting this plan into their local transportation plans, one of them being the Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And then, we will be working with both MARTA and the ATL, define strategies on how do we fund the next phase. So at this point, we have no funding commitments, we have no funding requests. This is a plan that we feel builds on top of the Fulton and Clayton plans that are already in place, and we want to work with the cities moving forward on our strategy for how do we get these implemented in those particular cities. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
That's all I feel about it, ma'am. Mr. Manager, the confusing part for me is, we got a lot of transportation conversations going on. The mayors meet frequently with the counties, dot G-O, dot G-Dot, and others talk about a regional plan, and what I'm hearing her say, even though she doesn't have funds and everything, but what I'm hearing her say are conversations that we've already had. For example, BRT to... For example, BRT to Parkway, we've had that fight for light rail. Also, we're talking about the BRT station, transit stations. That's a conversation. So, I'm concerned about, and I think it's great, but I'm concerned to how do we get this communication, you know, on the same level, you know, so we can move forward. All these things out here gets really confusing. I'll let you answer if you want.
Well, I think, Mayor, I think you made a great point. I think as the regional representative on the ATL, one thing that you could do is propose to the county who is kind of facilitating those conversations, that they bring in some of those regional partners like Eritropolis to be at the table as well. Because I think the Eritropolis probably has a smaller sphere of influence than the group that you're talking about with the ATL. And so, I think that is one way, but I'd also suggest to the council to not solely give away your regional authority and influence that you have outside of that group and still partner with areas like this. So, I think if the ATL is going to take on and fund things like BRT expansion and things of that nature, you let them do that, and then you give Eritropolis for that hefty investment that we made for the CID as well as the Alliance, the direction of what you want to see in South Fulton. And so, I think some of these things do align with that, but the ATL process is so much bigger than our region that inviting them to the conversation might be helpful.
And, Regent Director, I'll do that, all right? Have you all to come out and sit here because you're not there. Everybody is. And so, we can have this conversation, you know, kind of tailored to the right direction. Mr. Rob?
Let me get on a couple of points. I just wanted to get some clarity. The Corporate Crescent Phase One and Two, where are these? Is it Hayfield and College Park are where the two terminals are located, proposed?
Yes. So, the Corporate Crescent Phase One in particular is a very specific need that we found in conjunction with the airports and some of the MARTA services. There's currently a shuttle that runs operated by the airport between the international and domestic terminals, but does not really provide service to employees at the airport. It's really meant for passengers who can't get from one terminal to the other going through the airport because of security measures. And so, we found that there are a number of employees, both at the airport but also in between, that need more frequent service. So, we're proposing a circulator system between the international terminal and either the College Park MARTA station or the domestic terminal to provide that service gap. We also know that the MARTA 191 route, which comes out of Clayton County, terminates in the international terminal. I would imagine that there are a number of passengers on that bus that are not trying to get to the airport. They're trying to get to the MARTA rail, and therefore, they have to then get on another shuttle to get over there, which is meant, again, for passengers, not for employees. And so, employees actually have to wait until all the passengers have loaded, and if there's any space left, then they can get on the shuttle. Otherwise, they have to wait for the next one. So, this is a service that would service the airport, Hayfield, East Point, College Park, and then eventually, as development occurs and the demand continues, would circle the entire airport area and hit some of those southern cities and southern corridors like Old National Highway. I think that the demand is going to come quick. And so, while we show it as a future extension, it may be that we plan all of it at once and then construct it in phases based on funding.
And you talked about that being a need for employees. Is that, do you see that as a paid route?
So, we see it in the short term as being a rubber tire service so that we can get it on the ground a little bit quicker. I don't necessarily see the demand justifying like a light rail or that type of infrastructure investment. So, we see it as rubber tire, but we're also looking at other technologies, autonomous shuttles perhaps, but that's a part of our next phase in what we're talking to the ATL is we have more planning to do, right? There are other plans that are much further ahead of us, but we want to try to get these into the regional plan so that we're at least considered for future funding.
And lastly, Corporate Crescent Phase Two, where's the, where's the, your counterpoint?
So, the exact route is not determined all the way, but what you're seeing on there currently is on the west side, somewhere in the vicinity of US 29 Roosevelt Highway, and then turning off and going down Old National to Godbe Road, over to Phoenix Boulevard, Forest Parkway, and then up Old Dixie, I believe, is what we're showing. However, depending on where that demand is and where the service is needed and where stations are needed, we have the ability to alter that route.
Thank you. And I think to the city manager's point, I think while there are a lot of different conversations, you know, each of them would need a dedicated team looking at it. So, from the standpoint that if, you know, the bigger ATL guy is looking at, you know, just, for example, South Fulton Parkway, and that's the one thing they pick for our area, but that doesn't cover this, so I think it makes sense to just make sure, dear Mayor Anna, so I appreciate your comment about trying to make sure all the appropriate parties are at the table.
Ms. Gilliard?
You mentioned that there's no funding now, but there is a possibility to get federal funding. Is that true?
Yes. So, the way the new transit governance works, House Bill 930, they created the ATL, which is going to be the governing kind of funding house for all transit in the region. And so, the process that we're going to go through is all of the jurisdictions in Metro Atlanta are going to submit projects for transit into this one. They're going to go through a prioritization framework, and then from there, when there are opportunities for federal funding, they're going to go through the ATL, and then the ATL is going to disseminate that funding among the highest prioritized projects. And so, yes, in the future, we do believe that there is federal funding available. In the short term, we're looking for funding to continue our efforts, and those may be more on the local scale, but we're working with the ATL to strategize on that funding structure.
And the federal funding would be eighty percent or twenty percent?
So, FTA, Federal Transit Administration, here recently has lowered their contribution and have required a higher match for transit, which only multiplies the issue of trying to fund transit, that it used to be twenty percent local match, but the ones that are getting the funding are providing more in the range of thirty-five to forty-five percent of local match.
Let me just add a couple of things. Number one, with the ATL, need this possibility for funding in millions of dollars. And I've always had two issues. One was trust, and the other one was equity. That's kind of hard for me when I sit there at the meeting, and I express this every time I go, the trust and the equity. One of the reasons why the north gets what it gets, because they tend to have the most money up there, but they forget about it, is that we have, they have all of the shops and even places, but we go up there. And by going up there, we take a substantial amount of our disposable income to the north. So, the issue of the money really has, really has a holding voice, okay? Equity, and no longer, Mr. Mayor, I think I told you, no longer will I accept a handshake when it comes to transit. You're going to have to put it in writing. You really have to put it in writing, and that's where the trust issue comes in. On the equity side, we have, up there, we're talking about 285, and over about a brave statement, and the question becomes, who is that going to help? And it's Carl Paddy. He's talking about putting the million dollars of our money over there. So, we have projects down south, and I've talked to mayors here, we're going to be meeting Thursday again, and we talked about, they're getting us to real this, Councilor Maradale. For example, closer to, not closer to the industrial, but the Parkway and Burdette Road. That, just an example, that jam, the thing we have down there all the time, that's going to, that's a problem, and it has to be some way identified in the scheme of transit that we're trying to build. Lastly, let me say this. If you're talking about transportation nodes, which we're going to have, we got to identify, I don't want to agree to something and about two, six months later, Ms. Gilliard, I got to come back and readjust, because we have not identified what our activity nodes are going to be, or our nodes or activity places are going to be. So, there's got to be some flexibility in there to show that when we finish our land use plan, and we identify nodes and talent centers and stuff like that, there's got to be some flexibility in there to do that. And if we don't do it, what's going to happen is, you know, we're going to create all those places around that have the problems now. We're going to lighten the load someplace else, and you find them on the Parkway. All right? So, you want to help me now?
Yeah, I want to tell you right now. So, Eritropolis, I'm not going to forget that they came and they gave a presentation, and they said, in that presentation, they said fifteen percent of the workers at the airport live in South Fulton, and seventy-seven percent of the people that live in South Fulton work elsewhere. So, that relates to your point.
Okay, I just wanted to make those points. I'm for anything that has to do with traffic, and I just like trust and equity. All right? Thank you very much.
I just want to mention real quick that later tonight on your regular agenda, there's an item for CID expansions. Just want to mention that this is just a regulatory item that we have to go through as the CID, so we're expanding our boundaries within Fulton County. There are three or four parcels.
We have to talk about that when it comes up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think this might be good if there were questions that they were answered, because I believe it's on the consent agenda.
Okay.
And so, instead of pulling it off, it might be a good idea for them to ask questions now, perhaps.
So, there are three or four parcels within the city of South Fulton. All of them are on Old National Highway that have consented to join the CID boundary. In order for us to get certified by Fulton County and get all of these parcels into this next tax district, we have to get an approval resolution from each of the cities, regardless if there are any expansion parcels in there. And I think this is the first time City of South Fulton has done this with us, so I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any questions before you saw that on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Matt Burke?
Next item on the agenda is council discussion on VAE Urban Economics in Fulton, Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just want to introduce the consultants. As you all know, a few months ago, the city selected VAE Urban Economics to do the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city of South Fulton. They have been here on the ground the last two days, kind of getting the lay of the land of the city, and wanted to come to the council, talk a little bit about moving forward, what that plan looks like, how they're going to work here in the city, and then also just a smidgen about the steering committee, which is going to be very vital to moving the project forward. So, first, we will start out with Sherry Rudnick, and then after that, Mary Burkholder will come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you just heard, we are VAE Urban Economics. We are a national award-winning land use economics and real estate advisory firm. We are headquartered in the San Francisco Bay area in California with offices in Los Angeles, New York, Sacramento, and Washington, DC. We have, we've been in existence for about thirty-six years. We get involved everywhere economics touches the built environment from the very beginning of market studies and economic development strategies through understanding how to enhance feasibility to attract developers and development and teneting. We have a very robust affordable housing practice nationally as well. And then personally, I grew up in Atlanta. I was born and raised here, so I'm really excited to be here, to be back working here. So, Mary Burkholder, who leads our practice out of Washington, DC, is going to be project managing, and I will be the principal in charge on this project. Mary's going to talk a little bit about our process now. Oh, yes.
Do you all have a presentation or anything for us?
We did not make a presentation. We just wanted to kind of talk through things with you, but we would be happy to give you some information about us. I believe you saw our proposals, and everything we're saying is in there as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mary Burkholder, and I am, as Sherry mentioned, I am the project manager for the project. And we did just kick off the project this week, so we've been on the ground for the last two days, doing a meeting with a dozen or so stakeholders, and the stakeholders include some business association representatives, major employers, the Eritropolis CID and Alliance, and then several real estate professionals. We're trying to get a sense of the, what's going on demographically, economically, and with real estate. And our next step will be to prepare an existing conditions assessment, which will really dive deep into demographics, economics, we'll look at real estate market analysis, and then we're going to do a competitive assessment, looking at the communities that you, the South Fulton, compete with in the area for economic development. So, that'll be the first part of it. And then after that, we will come back, present that existing conditions assessment, and then do convened focus groups, and those will be open to the public, and there'll be focus groups of residents and businesses, so lots of opportunity for community input there. And then we'll conduct a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats assessment, analysis, and that again would be a community-wide process. And following that, there'll be targeted, target industry sector analysis, and then an organizational plan, recommendations. And then follows that is the action plan, which is, which is, needs up to the final report. And that will include recommendations for the short term, the medium term, and the long term, and it will be very much an actionable plan. We pride ourselves in making plans that can get implemented, and so, we will work with full information to be able to do that. And I guess I should say with that, we'll be working closely with the staff, with the steering committee. As Christopher mentioned, that steering committee will be full of representatives that will be, come from the community. And then we'll bring together all the quantitative data, qualitative info from the businesses and the residents, and the plan will be an objective analysis with substantial community input. That will take about approximately sixteen, six months to complete. So, that's the entire process. Any questions?
Yes, several.
I'm off the, I can't see who's on the queue.
Councilmember Cleve.
Okay, Ms. Cleve, go ahead. Can you tell me about the steering committee?
So...
So, do you mean the makeup or what the steering committee is going to do?
Both.
The makeup.
Okay. Well, the makeup is a recommendation from staff, so they just gave segments of people to participate on the steering committee, but staff is the one that made the recommendation, so they don't have anything to do with the recommendation and the steering committee, the makeup.
All right. So, how many people are on it, and then how is the steering committee going to pass the analysis of VAE? And then how is the steering committee going to pass the analysis of BAE or the priorities that BAE sets?
So, so, steering committee, the recommendation's about twenty people. I think we recommended about twenty-one or twenty-two just because of the different segments. Uh, the steering committee oversees and makes sure that the desires of committee, or community are in the plan. So, we can let Mary speak more on that, uh, in more detail.
This is probably important in the note, don't they pick the steering committee?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, they have some of the representatives.
Yeah, so, absolutely. You select the steering committee. This is a recommendation from staff on where these people could potentially come from. So, it's the council's decision on who's on the steering committee.
That's the one.
Okay.
So, they, remember that BAE recommended sectors for which people should come. BAE recommended sectors from which people should come from. Staff gave you a big grouping. And now, you guys have, are, you council members have to pick who you want on the steering committee.
So, so, I'm still confused. How does the steering committee affect your scope of work? Because I, I thought that in the contract, we had already set what your scope of work is.
Yeah, well, the steering committee would be part of the, uh, review process of what, what, they'll review some of what we, the deliverables that we make. And then they'll be the first sort of review part of this. And that will be a community, as you said, it would be a community-wide, um...
So, so, the steering committee has the power to change or edit or amend the deliverables that we've asked for?
I, not so much the deliverables. I mean, just to make sure that we make, that we've incorporated the community input. That's really what the large, largely what the role was.
Yeah, yeah, um, this, you know, this is, we, we often use steering committees on, on community-wide plans like this, particularly with economic development. When you have the community resident groups and the business groups, um, you know, you have a, a lot of different stakeholders who have a very, uh, narrow perspective of what they wanna see. And so, when they come together and hear the information kinda holistically and thinking about it citywide, hear each other's perspectives, then even if everybody doesn't get exactly what they want at the end of the day, they know how and why the decisions were made and they had a voice in the process. And so, it, it ends up being really helpful in terms of, um, creating, um, local champions and people who wanna carry this forward, make sure it gets implemented. Um, and just so that, you know, nobody feels like anything was kinda done behind closed doors or, or through some black box process.
And so, and your final report will actually have recommendations for priorities, for things that we should prioritize?
We are going to make recommendations and we are going to give an actionable implementation plan. And that will be driven by priorities that we hear from staff and from you and from your representatives on the steering committee throughout the process.
And it's, and it covers all business sectors. I, I guess you're gonna look at what are existing businesses in this area?
We are going to look at existing businesses. We're going to look at target industries to attract, who needs to grow, what kind of space they need to grow and stay local. Um, what are some of the competitive advantages you have? What is it that is going to strengthen desirability for your local residents? We've heard a lot about live work play. Um, so, we, we really are going to tackle economic development, um, from every angle that we can.
Alright, thank you. Okay, Ms. Willis?
Yes, um, and so, um, thank you for coming. And, uh, what I would have really liked to see is some type of outline, uh, written outline. Uh, we, I, I hear what you're saying, but I saw it in the, uh, presentation, I mean, the, uh...
Proposal proposal?
The proposal. But I want to see a more realistic outline of where we're going from here. Um, and second of all, I understand you're from Alaska, but we're South Fulton. And the people in this region, we fought hard for that autonomy. And we need to focus on that autonomy. Um, and the stakeholders that you met with, um, I think the first stakeholders that you need to spend time with is the residents in our community. Because our residents really want input on this, on the subject matter. And so, um, that, that's some of the pushback that you, that you were sensing from us. Because some of us feel like, you know, you should've probably spent time with us first and then gone to residents. And so, I heard you said you met with stakeholders. I mean, who are the stakeholders that you met with?
Well, Councilwoman Willis, actually, the first stage of this that's supposed to happen is the steering committee was supposed to be formed. Um, we sent a memo, uh, twice to council trying to get some consensus on the steering committee, because they can't begin to do the work of putting together a strategic plan without having the steering committee in place. We didn't want their trip here today, because the consensus that we got from the council was that we wanted to hear from the consultant before being comfortable with making a steering committee appointment. So, we didn't want their trip here to be wasted. So, we talked to high-level folks that we knew that were going to be part of the interview process anyway. So, just the standard folks that would be, make sense for us, like the CIDs, the merchants associations, real estate folks. So, it wasn't anybody that is gonna have any influence more than anyone else. These were just people that we knew we were gonna talk to so that they can begin doing the work in absence of the steering committee, which we need to have in place before the real work takes place with the plan.
And, and I appreciate that, Mr. Pike. And I, and we, and I, all of us received both your emails and you got pushed back. When you requested for the steering committee. Because we, the understanding is that we want to make sure that each of our districts are, you know, that time is spent with us and our community. And so, you're probably gonna get more pushback, as I said with you the other day, to explain, because we need to feel comfortable this economic development process is gonna include our community. And some of these people that you are, that staff is recommending, and I get what you're saying, and I feel like that is a, an important component. But some of the people that you were recommending to be on the steering committee or organizations, some of the people who represent these organizations don't live in our community.
Okay, Councilwoman Marra?
I'm gonna, um, thank you. I, I want the council, I, I think, one, the first time, I just know talking to several people, they must have misunderstood the memo originally, uh, which would have, which allows each of the council people to make sure we have a representative on the council. And so, I can speak for myself. I don't think this is any different than the Chattahoochee Study Area Two group. Um, and several of us on council have participated on that. You, you can tell it's a broad cross-section of people. And the next phase of that is actually the public engagement process. So, again, trying to get all the stakeholders who have an interest in it to the table initially. And then the next phase of that is the public meeting, which is scheduled for June. This process is no different than that, if you look at the structure. And I, I know everybody has not, not participated, but these three people on this council have. And I'm just sharing, if you look at the structure, it's almost identical to that process. That's what I'm...
Okay, alright, this would be council, Councilwoman Pike.
I'm not in the queue.
You were.
Yes.
My computer's going back in time. What about, what I got, I got, I got deep. Okay, well, you're on the... Alright, go ahead. So, you, you, you did, um, you did get a lot of pushback, uh, from us. And I think really, the reason why that kind of thing happens is when things get dropped on us and we don't know anything about it, and then when we ask questions about it, then we don't get, I believe, the way, but, but we accept. Maybe some of us know more about it than others. The difference between the Genuine and this one is that it doesn't involve government and council. And so, that's kinda sort of different. For that in particular, I'm talking about the people that are designing it and the people that are, you know, the people that are designing it are in the, the, you know, the same role that Mr. Pike is playing and city managers play, that's what I'm saying. So, and I think that because those, those, um, organizations, if you will, were already set up with no conversation with us and with us period, with whoever these organizations were, that that sort of sent up a red flag. So, that was really, really, and still is an issue, as you can hear. But my thing is that we really did, and I don't think that we really did this right. We approved the economic development plan and we really should've approved the strategic plan first so that we could've gotten overall strategy and then the economic development plan would fall in place under it. And that, that, so I still believe that. I very, I very strongly believe that. So, I went to the, um, draft, uh, strategic plan. And on page one sixty-eight, I was shocked, 'cause it says, one sixty-eight, it says, "South Fulton Business and Community Council." And it is listed under the city currently operates the following boards for citizens to participate in. Is that the board that you're talking about? This is another, this is a different board, okay? So... So, what is the title of the board that you're talking about?
So, the steering committee will only live until the plan is adopted by council. So, they're here just to make sure that communities' desires and wishes are adhered to and the plan is put together.
I understand. Who selected the stakeholders that are businesses and associations that would be a part of this community?
This is a recommendation from staff to the council for council approval.
They're recommending to me.
Right, recommend. So, the staff that's recommending is economic development, that's the development staff?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so, this is, the BAE came up with the cross sectors that they need represented to be able to coordinate their activities. Not knowing the landscape here, our team put together a broad swath of basically every group that exists in and around South Fulton. From that group, it was forwarded to council to say, hey, you can pick whoever you would like to. But here is a group of organizations that fit the cross sections that they asked for. As such, the council can then come back and say, great, we're gonna look at all of these organizations and each council member will appoint from that group. Or you could say, we don't like this group. I like Jason's economic development and I'm gonna appoint from there. But it gets you started to know the full breadth of what they're looking for in each section so that you can appropriately appoint and have your will carried out through the plan.
So, you know what? That was, what you just said was excellent. I think if we had known everything that you just said from A to Z, that would've made a real big difference. And let me tell you why. 'Cause it's, a, a paragraph came out, it wasn't that, that clear. And underneath it was a list of organizations with our names paired beside them. And everyone wanted to know what is this, where did it come from, why are we doing it? And what you just said made a real big difference. At least it did for me.
No, not a prob, I think that's on me, so I'll make sure to continue to simplify those memos. Like, uh, we were trying to put a ton of information out there to, to over-communicate. And I think it probably would have, uh, cleared some things up if we streamlined that. So, uh, apologies for that, but I'm, I'm glad that we're all on the same page now.
Okay, Councilwoman, and you want to talk about...
So, I have a, uh, I guess the question is in regards to the makeup of the steering committee. What, uh, should the residents or whoever we appoint expect as far as time commitments and meetings and things of that nature? How much time is invested into these steering committees or do you see?
Probably over the, the, the six-month period or so. It might be four or five times meeting for the steering committee, couple of hours each time.
So, possibly once a month?
Um, probably a little bit less than once a month, yes.
Okay. And you say in a couple of hours?
Yes, for each meeting.
And when will this, uh, start? If we go ahead and appoint, as soon as possible?
Well, as soon as possible. I guess it has to be appointed first. The group has to be, you know, to appoint it first.
And there's no training or anything that they need?
No, actually, we want this to very much be the citizens, that their perspective's coming. So, there's no particular training.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, I, I just wanna make, I wanna clarify. For me, there's nothing wrong with my reading comprehension. I understand everything that was requested of me. I also participated in the, in the Greenway Trail, uh, plan. And, um, what was, in the Greenway Trail, was resident input. So, on the steering committee, I do want residents included, not just businesses and not just organizations. I want residents included. Uh, also, we have a lot of planning going on throughout our city. So, what is the community engagement gonna look like? Because what I don't want to happen, and I've already talked with Ms. Inga about it, our residents need this engagement, but they're gonna fall off and they have to keep coming to different meetings for different things. And so, what I would like to see, and I've already talked to staff about it, is a way that maybe we can do a day of planning, um, maybe one or two or three throughout the city and include maybe some focus groups for economic development and include some focus groups for zoning and include some focus groups for transportation. Because we need our residents engaged and they're not gonna keep coming out with different needs. So, can you please explain to us what this community engagement looks like? And if you are opposed, I wanna talk to Urban, I mean, uh, Ms. Sibey. Are you all opposed to having community members on the steering commi, uh, committee?
No, I think that second column of recommended, it has the council district that was meant to be your residence, not matched up with the other columns. So, it, there's, there's a whole section of, of residents we anticipate definitely are stakeholders and should be part of this process. In terms of public outreach, uh, we met the people from Wood today. We understand that, that they're taking on, um, some zoning and planning. We exchanged information. We would be more than happy to coordinate with them and make sure that you don't have resident community outreach fatigue. Um, I think that's a critical and, and important thing to note. So, we're absolutely open to, uh, anything that we can do to, um, enhance engagement and make sure that it's meaningful and...
Pike and these folks who've come in town and already started working, that they've already met with Wood, who's doing our zoning, and have plans to meet with everyone else who have plans in our community. So, we will create a cross-section of outreach to our residents. So, it is not a one-off activity or anything we believe we need additional funding for. They are funded to be able to carry this activity out. So is Wood, so are the other vendors. And what Mr. Pike is doing is we need to one, uh, central activity. And so, the, I wouldn't be able to spew off any numbers for you today, but we are very clear that the council wants outreach and citizen engagement to be a very big part of this activity.
My specific question is, will our residents, will our residents receive some type of mail communication? I don't know if you can answer that, or if you can answer that, you can answer that. My specific question is, will our residents be sent some type of mail or, uh, mail communication that this engagement has started and when these workshops will happen?
Oh, Ms. Sibey?
I won't be answer, I don't have an answer to that question, so I'll defer, I'll let it be answered.
Um, yes, it's, it's definitely, um, possible to have something mailed out. Uh, we will talk to city staff about the best way to do that, whether it's in a utility, um, bill, that's often how it's done, or if there's a better way to do it. Um, I'm happy to discuss with Inga on the best way to do it. She and I actually just worked together on a project for MARTA not long ago. So, um, we are open to suggestion. Uh, we have budget to do this engagement and make sure that everybody is outreach too. And so, um, you know, we are going to look to you to tell us the best way to make sure everybody, uh, is contacted and then we'll make sure that happens.
Okay, so, I ask for these things to happen with the communication. I ask respectfully that it's timely, so we can make sure we get it out timely enough to our residents so they have time to plan. I ask that you let the council know what you're sending out to the residents and we see it before it's sent out to residents and we know when it's going out to residents. So, when we get phone calls... So when we get phone calls, we'll know what the phone calls are about. That's all I ask for respectfully, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is council discussion on zoning ordinance revision with Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions in.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, I believe we do have some slides and they're there, excellent, okay. So we're here this evening and thank you for making time on your agenda. I will move relatively quickly through presentation expecting questions and time for answering, I know you have your seven o'clock meeting. So the purpose of this is to provide status updates on the zoning ordinance rewrite process that is underway. Okay, excellent. So very quickly, we'll go through a quick recap of the overall process that we're going through. Discuss the public involvement to date. Talk a little bit about analysis, sort of overview of analysis. I can go much deeper into that if time warrants if you have questions. And then specifically focus on next steps. So again, our purpose, several key purposes to this process, but summarized as stated there. We're very much about updating and streamlining the zoning ordinance. As you know well, what you have currently as your zoning ordinance is, has been adapted from Fulton County zoning ordinance. A big part of what we're about is making this a true city of South Fulton zoning ordinance. Addressing the needs and issues that you have currently as a city. Updating and streamlining is a big part of that, making it work better, making it better support the, the planning and permitting process. Which is a day-to-day challenge that Shayla and her staff take on. Also, where necessary, bringing the ordinance into compliance with current state guidelines, et cetera. These things change year to year as court cases happen, et cetera. So there's, there's that piece of work also. And, and again, really emphasizing we're very much about tailoring this to meet the needs of the city of South Fulton. So the process is four general steps. First, public input to inform the zoning process. We started the whole effort by meeting with, with you, having some individual or small group meetings to get your take on zoning, on needs and your thoughts. And then we, we have the opportunity to join many of you, I think almost all of you at this point, at district town hall meetings. To start the discussion with residents about this process that is going on. Inviting them into, into the process, giving information. And then I'll have more to say about public involvement from there. But that started from the, from the very beginning. So that's step one, really priority one. Step two, technical analysis is underway, looking at the ordinance itself, will also be evaluating the zoning map. I think we had a bit of discussion about this last night and it's important to point this out again. We are not looking through this process, I think I should say, to rezone people's property. That's a separate process that has its own procedures that takes place, as you're well aware, every month. So what we're looking at here is making appropriate text revisions and appropriate map revisions for clarity for all the purposes that I just discussed. But when we talk about actually rezoning a property, for example, from residential to commercial, et cetera. Those are separate processes that have their own due diligence. So I always want to point that out just to reassure people. Well, after completing analysis, we'll be drafting the new ordinance document. That'll be a process of drafts and reviews and confirmation and then a review and adoption process associated with that. Looking at, so each one, taking each one of those, public involvement to date. Um, we have, yes, a chunk of this slide. So we crafted a public involvement plan after meeting with you and, and getting input about stakeholders and resident interests and so forth. I believe you had an opportunity to review that public involvement plan. That serving as a guide for how we're proceeding through the process. So it details the approach to public outreach, describes the types of meetings and venues that we're having, proposing to have during the process. And it's a guide, and that's posted on the website from the state, it will be very shortly. And then promotion and early opportunities, we are, we have been and we will continue to promote citizen participation. Provide feedback in-person, public meetings, the district meetings. We've had numerous opportunities to meet with community groups, we've been invited. I think it's been to several different community group meetings, so we're looking for more opportunities for those with neighborhoods, organizations, et cetera. Local events as they come up. We're promoting surveys as well as explaining to the public and all the different opportunities we can, what this process is about and what is going on, and there'll be more opportunities. Also, online, there's a project webpage tied to your webpage, there is an online survey that we're receiving input that will continue to come in. There's a project dedicated email address for comments, we received some comments via email. Lots of different ways, you have to reach out, a wide variety of ways. So public involvement to date, sort of a summary on this slide. We've attended, I think, over fifteen public meetings and outreach activities to this point. That includes a kickoff meeting here, includes town hall meetings, includes some community neighborhood organization meetings, local events. There's some work in the works. And we're getting good feedback, getting good discussion response, we're seeing surveys completed and so forth. We have listening sessions of you that I mentioned. The district town hall meetings have been mostly, you know, we're a part of the agenda at those meetings. So it's been mostly about informing your constituents that along with everything else going on, we're also working on the zoning ordinance this year. And we put this survey out and we encouraged them to complete the survey, we passed out paper copies and we've had some people pull it out online. Community organizations I've mentioned have commented. The background of this slide is the schedule that we've talked about in the past. We've been, you've received paper copies and other versions of this in the past. We are still on schedule to carry through the process and complete by the end of the year. Same time, we recognize that there's got to be flexibility to accommodate discussions and so forth and review as we go through the process. But we're striving to stay on schedule. Next slide, the surveys specifically. So the survey and the online tools give alternative convenient ways for citizens to provide input, to answer questions, to give us early input and then later on. There are those who are unable to attend public meetings, so we want to reach them in different ways however we can. We've encouraged and we've, we've gotten a good initial response to the surveys. And we're going to continue, we are continuing to promote the survey to solicit additional response. And, and we're hoping for a robust feedback by the end of the process via the survey. Okay, so analysis, just a couple of slides on this. One aspect of analysis is looking at the overall structure of the zoning ordinance. And how well it serves the city's interests, interests of residents, property owners, in terms of the way it's organized. Because the way something's organized makes a big difference. So we've looked at how it's organized, we've met and discussed different options with staff. There are different ways to go about this, if you look across different pure cities, you'll see different approaches. In general, an approach that we feel is strong is organizing the document consistent with the order of the development process. So there are certain things that you encounter very early in the process, those need to be in the front of the document. Other more detailed aspects of, you know, land development, for example, are much farther down the process after you've cleared the first several hurdles. So those follow in that order. So we're working with staff to craft an outline that's consistent with that philosophy. And that outline in its, in a detailed format will be one of the first aspects of the draft that will be reviewed and commented on. So then the other aspects of analysis have to do, of course, with the content of the ordinance itself. And this is where I've got four or five pages here at the point that I will not read through right now, but I'll give you a straightforward summary of the key aspects of analysis. So one, where are we outdated? Where do we have language in this ordinance that's outdated? And how do we need to update that? That has to do with definitions, you know, definitions of things change dramatically over time. We've got definitions in the ordinance that don't make any sense anymore. And then on the other hand, we have people coming in asking about things that we don't have to define in the ordinance. Because there are new types of uses or new technologies and so forth. So we're looking very carefully at that. Overlay districts shows up as number two on the list there, absolutely. We've done a complete analysis, we have a giant spreadsheet that Anna's put together, comparative analysis of different aspects of the overlay districts. And we're looking to result in a, in a zoning ordinance that respects the overlay districts. And what they achieve and how they came to be, but that also streamlines it and makes it easier for everyone to work with. And treats the city as a unified city, of course. Processes and procedures are very important. We understand you're also looking at software to support processes and procedures. Well, the ordinance needs to do its role in making the overall process more logical and straightforward. So that's an aspect of analysis. Coordination and consistency has been mentioned several times tonight, that there are other planning processes going on. So we're eager to read the draft, or as soon as it's available to us, the strategic plan. To make sure we understand everything that says, once you approve that. And to make sure that the zoning ordinance plays its part in helping to implement a strategic plan. We'll coordinate with the economic development team as we go forward and others. Local input on issues, definitely. Everything we hear through surveys, through comments, resident interest and input, we'll be asking ourselves, how does the zoning ordinance address this issue of local input? And that's something that's a little hard to predict, with our next step being public workshops. There, I'm sure, are things that we're going to hear that we weren't necessarily anticipating. So we're prepared to continue the analysis to consider all the resident input that we receive through the process. So the last point, saying substantially completed in the past four months. We have completed a lot of this analysis, but it has to be ongoing as public input continues to come in. So that gives us, last slide, next steps, where are our next steps? We propose a series of public workshops that will be structured, facilitated, public efforts in different locations in the city. In order to be, you know, convenient to the population that is spread across a pretty wide geography here. We propose four facilitated public workshops. Potential dates that we have discussed with staff and that we are presenting as part of this and that you, I think, had in your package to look at. Are May thirtieth, June fourth, June sixth. The one additional date that we're looking at is adding one in between there, which will be June third. That said, those are proposed, those are tentative, we're flexible and glad to discuss alternatives. But we are at the same time ready to proceed to, to promote and work those public workshop dates, if that's acceptable at meetings. We've had some progress locating likely meeting locations, we're glad to see feedback on that as well. Promotion means are as indicated there. And then there will be a second series of public involvement meetings that will happen in the fall. At the time that a draft is ready to present to the public. So this will not be the only public input process, we're looking to get input upfront, then complete the draft and then bring the draft back to the public in the fall. So time, you know, to be confirmed probably in the October, November timeframe, again promoting that. Open house format is typically what works best there, and we would again look to have that in convenient locations. So with that, I'll stop and we'll be happy to answer any questions or go into any additional detail that you would like.
Councilwoman, would be, would be my, would be up there to talk to you?
I want to have a comment, and we had a town hall meeting on Thursday night, but it's not listed in the group meetings on age.
Yeah, I, I think what, I think what happened is it got captured in your, in that district list, where it says districts one, two, three, four, five, six.
But I'm looking at the list where it identifies.
So on the.
Where identifies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the list, it identifies each one. For instance, Flifted Hill, Philwood, Sandtown, Cascade, Winter Ridge, Oakley Town Center. So they signed the lists.
Yes, you did have a beautiful meeting at your location. And to the left, I think it's captured in where it lists the district participation.
Yeah, I couldn't say.
So we didn't call, we didn't call everybody's, because we've met with a lot of districts. And so yours was district four, so it's just kind of captured in the district participation list.
So maybe it was really a district meeting.
It was a, it was a district meeting, yes, absolutely. But I understand what you mean, that you wanted a call out, because we did have a beautiful meeting. Really, really good participation and good interaction and feedback. And it was at a small white building, is what it was called.
Thank you.
I want to compliment Ms. Inga, because one thing I can say is that she has been very aggressive about making sure that she got community input. We don't have to tell her, as a matter of fact, we have to ask where she's go, where is she going? Can she tell us where she's going, so we can send our residents? And so that's the difference between having somebody who lives in a community and knows our community. Because we don't have to tell her, she has been wonderful about making sure that she reach our residents. And Ms. Inga, when you get an opportunity, can you please go to Welcome Mall Park? Because there's a huge senior community there during the daytime. And it might be beneficial to you to go talk to the seniors at Welcome Mall Park.
Night, on Friday nights. And so we mentioned to you early on that we're not bound by location, we're not bound by day, night. We want to make sure that we get to your residents by any means necessary. And so just let us know when things are happening and we'll show up. And so we have a lot to, to still coordinate.
So I have a request for, for the Welcome Mall area, they don't have an organized community group. And so what I want to ask is when you decide to do the public meeting there, can you please let me know and coordinate with me? So that I can try to get a mailer out to that community and a robocall out to that community. On when this zoning rewrite, rewrite, uh, public meeting is going to be held.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we have budget for the mailer. And so, and we also have some existing lists. And we'll coordinate, okay, and we'll coordinate with you and, and the city.
So that's all I ask is to coordinate with me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, so I'll look, yes, I'll look to get your list and then we'll integrate everything together and we'll take that responsibility.
All right, thank you.
And there's been a lot of discussion about us updating Fulton County's ordinance. But the reality is over the last two years, we have adopted a number of ordinances that did not just uniformly, blankly adopt that Fulton County had. And so how are we making sure that as you deal with your rewrite, that you're looking at the most recent version? Because they're not necessarily just in that hard copy that you have from Fulton County.
So staff recently received the most updated copy. And we're waiting here from the clerk's office on, I believe you just gave us the final copy this week, right? So they'll be sharing that information this week.
So, so the city attorney has provided all the ordinances?
It's the zoning ordinance that was approved back in November.
Okay, so she just got it, so, okay. So y'all been working pretty much from.
So y'all been working pretty much from the hard copy and not the newest version? Is that correct? I'm not sure.
So they've been working from the newest version, which in the late, giving the GIS maps updated, but they have the older version with the older GIS maps?
So all the things.
So the only thing that's changed is the maps are now more current.
Okay.
And your community is, your community is very familiar. Yes, they're, they're very knowledgeable, so they, they know what they're talking about. So we're working from the text of the, of the old.
Right. I know like, I mean, for example, I know we've passed like Airbnb, some things that the county had not taken any, you know, action on. So I just wanna make sure that whatever you're working from, you have at least taken those newer up ordinances that we've adopted.
Absolutely. We recognize that's all, that even more things are the work. So we're tracking this as well.
Thank you.
Next would be the legal regulations.
You talked about making sure that the zoning ordinance is with the design overlay. Are you actually rewriting the design overlays as well? Is that a part of your school program?
To the extent necessary, but at this point, we're not hearing they need to be rewritten. We're hearing they need to be, in some cases streamline, overlap needs to be eliminated. Clarify, are there some aspects of the overlays that should just simply be a part of the citywide ordinance as opposed to only applying to certain districts?
I can tell you the whole national overlay is like forty to twelve pages. Tweaked or a big bit to be made of.
Right.
The, so the, the whole zoning ordinance is like thirteen hundred pages, thirteen hundred seventy pages, something like that? The, what is the timeline for? When will it be delivered to us? And then do you have any suggestions for how we go through those thirteen hundred pages? Is that a series of meetings? Is that a work session? What is the timeline?
With coffee for sure. We'll structure that in the fall, first of all. They'll be drafting in the fall. We will make a strong effort to highlight the areas of change. This will not be a scenario, at least in our opinion, of course you have the option to do this if you'd like, but this is not a scenario where you start reading word one and you finish reading the last word of the document. We'll be highlighting those areas and describing for you the nature of the changes, the locations of the changes, the text of the changes, so that you can focus your review and comment on the key areas, as well as look over the entire document as you would like. And when it comes time, we'll be glad to have work sessions or focus meetings or whatever format works best to accomplish that. Yes, sir.
While we're awaiting this final document, some of us have zoning moratoriums in place.
Correct.
I am wondering, is, is it possible to sit with you? I know it's not in the scope of work, but how much extra would it be for us to sit with you and come up with either a zoning moratorium or a moratorium on like uses?
Something that we could have in the interim while we're waiting for this document.
We'll be, along with staff, we'll be glad to have those discussions. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I have a quick question in regards to the overlays. They are very restrictive and not as friendly to businesses. What type of outreach are you doing to the businesses? Because I get a lot of complaints and feedback from business owners that do business in the city and stop closing around overlays. Is that being taken into consideration for outreach?
It is, it is. We have generally met with the National Merchies Association. We'll be meeting with the Cascade Business Association. We'll be sitting down with some of the Parkway Alliance businesses around the area and getting their input and allowing them to fill out the survey as well. In addition to that, though, in addition to the general public, you have the code enforcement for it that works regularly, the code enforcement that works regularly with businesses. And we'll be sitting down with them, getting their feedback because they are out there with the business community on a daily basis, getting, enforcing the zoning, but also getting feedback on what challenges they're experiencing. So we'll be sitting with them. We've also been asked to meet with the police and public safety. And Mayor, you'll remember that early on, we coordinated a lot of the, a lot of the overlay districts with participation from the police departments. And so, from the police department. And so we want to sit down with them as well and get their information. But yes, the business community is, is, is key to, they were part of creating the overlays. But as Lee mentioned, trends change. And so we need to see what's changed since those very old overlays have been established.
Well, I would just like to make a recommendation. That strip on Butter Road, the shopping center.
Where you're.
They don't, they don't have. They have a small group that's organized, the business owners. And I don't know if you're able to reach out to them.
Yes, absolutely. If you can get the information, I'll be, would have to. And then just kind of walk through with them what some of the issues are that they have. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, council, I would like to discuss with you about the June twenty-fifth meeting. And what you would like to do, either cancel it or reschedule it. We would not have a quarrel, so I would like.
What is it?
June twenty-fifth.
All right, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Before we leave, colleagues, I'd like to ask a couple of things. Number one is, do we go back and we deal with one item in terms of, what is it, personnel? While we're back there. But the other thing I wanted to share with you is that we've been conversing about another way to do things, Councilwoman, Lee, you, Mr. Loomin, and this Councilman, Garth. And that is that we would have a, our first meeting, am I correct? Our first meeting would be a work session. And then our second meeting, to our regular meeting, we would entertain any emergency items or things of that nature. So the work session would be the time for us to communicate what we're doing, get the information, and then we come back in the second meeting and then we would do our voting. Does that sound, how's that sounding?
All right. Is it like one, one day, one Tuesday we do this?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, that works?
Absolutely. Okay, so.
So just for clarification, you're saying that?
One meeting out of the month, we have nothing but work, work session items. We get all out, we work shop, everything we need to work shop. And then we have one regular meeting where we vote on everything that has been worked shop or ready to be voted on. I love it.
Is it still working?
Unless there's something time sensitive.
Yeah, like an emergency time test, like a real fast, let's go ready.
Yeah, I just wanna, want my colleagues to be aware, when we hold items, that means we're gonna be holding items for a month if we take this one just at five.
Let's, please go ahead, real fast.
The, the, so if the, if the first meeting is, if the first meeting is a work session and the second meeting is the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Are we going to have public comment at the first meeting and the second meeting?
No.
So we'll only have public comment once a month?
Right.
Will we have the zoning hearings at the second meeting?
Zoning, I think, comes at the second meeting.
So we'll have public comment and zoning here. So like the, the second meeting will have a very limited time to actually vote or discuss anything. And. And then are there proclamations at both meetings?
No. First meeting would be all about what we get today.
We'll have a five hour work session.
Yeah, talk about, entertain, question, all of that. And then there not be much change to the second meeting.
The items?
Yes. It started, it started at five o'clock.
So the, so the second meeting would start at five o'clock with proclamations?
No, no. We start the, we start the, the work session, we're starting it back, all right? We'll keep it at back. Am I correct?
No, you're saying the second meeting is all a regular meeting? There is not a work session, right?
No.
The first meeting of the month is the work session.
Right.
Starting at five o'clock.
Right.
And you would discuss all items that need to be discussed and need approval. So in the second meeting, we haven't really.
Those items would go to.
Those items, those work session items will go to the agenda, either on consent for everything that, except for ordinances, will have to go on the agenda. Everything else could go to consent unless it's something that comes up and is a emergency or time sensitive. And then you would still have your zoning, your public comments at that second meeting as well. But the zoning would have come to work session first for you all to discuss the zoning issues.
So the second meeting, there will be no work session component?
Right.
It will start at five o'clock?
I don't think.
It's still a seven o'clock meeting, is it?
Okay, so we're just, we're, we're really just eliminating the.
You're combining the work session.
There you go.
I, I guess, I guess my, my, my concern, my concern about time is that we're gonna start the meeting at seven. We're gonna have proclamations, zoning, and public comment before we actually do any voting. So that'll, so I mean, that was.
We've already discussed it. So really gonna be put on the consent agenda for one's vote.
Okay, but, but what I'm saying, so if we have zoning, if we have zoning items, there are for and against, if that's gonna happen at the work session?
No.
I mean, that's gonna happen at the five.
Yes. We're gonna talk about it. Am I, am I correct?
So, you have a master?
No, let me, let me get, let me stand hand just down. Am I correct? Because we gotta go in the back.
Yeah, I think that's what it, so I think the proposal is, and I think you might be confusing it a little bit. The proposal is, is that the first meeting of the month is a full work session item so that any items that are requesting council approval are brought before the body, discussed, evaluated, and vetted. Those that the council approves or has no issue with, then go to the next meeting agenda on the consent. Those items that do not, that need additional vetting, et cetera, et cetera, either come back to the next work session or can go on to discussion for the next meeting. Proclamations, uh, uh, proclamations, zoning, hearings, et cetera, would remain on the second meeting untouched, same format, et cetera. But you would basically be clearing off time. Instead of going through the work session and then discussing these items in one meeting, you would have a full meeting to discuss them prior to them going on the consent. So for instance, today.
No, I got you. I just wanted to just cut you because I know it's my time to show. My, my concern is that if the, so the second meeting, we're starting at seven o'clock. We have thirty minutes of public comment and then we'll.
I think this is just.
Well, I'm just saying, what we, what we said now, because I just want us to think this all the way through, we'll have thirty minutes of public comment. That takes us to seven thirty. Then if we have any zoning hearing items, they get twenty minutes each side, right? So we could, we could, we could conceivably not begin voting until nine o'clock at that, seven o'clock. We, we will see tonight, like, but very often when we have public comment and zoning hearing items, we actually don't start voting until eight thirty or nine.
It wouldn't change that, but you don't go, you don't make it through those meetings as is. And so this would allow you to hear all of those items before. And so every item that would be on there for approval tonight would actually be on the consent agenda versus being a discussion item because theoretically you would have discussed them earlier in the month.
And so I'll just, lastly, I'll say, I think that we need to kind of see it in writing.
That's, that's what I'm gonna suggest. While we write it, uh, send out there to everybody and solicit their comments on this issue.
And I also, I also think that as a, as a, it's governed by our ordinance, so we'll have to do an ordinance change to absolutely.
I think your charter only, our charter.
Okay, let's go right fast.
A quick suggestion for the second meeting, maybe we do the proclamations at six. Have it separate and with, however many proclamations you have at a second meeting, you deal with them from six on and you still start to need to have.
That'd be a suggestion. We get it written up, you can make that suggestion. I'm just going.
Oh, no, I'll wait till.
Okay, all right. Good enough.
I believe that we recess into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Pop your move, second in discussion. All those in favor? Let's go.